Good evening. I'd like to call the September fourteenth regular board meeting to order. Mrs. McConaughey, can you please call the roll?
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Mr. Hanlon, will you lead us in the pledge?
... of the United States of America and as the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with the freedom and justice of our.
It feels great to be back in a school other than Hubble for the last two years. So, Mrs. Bednar, would you... There you are. Okay. Okay, there we go. Hello, good evening and welcome to Edison. We are so happy to have you back. I think it's been, I think 2019 was the last time you were here. So, we're so glad that you're back. Hopefully, you enjoyed our orchestra playing this evening. I have a couple of students that are going to come and join me up here at the podium. So, Sangai, would you please come up? And Daniel, come on over. It is National Arts and Education Week, so this couldn't have been more perfect that the school board landed this, the school board meeting landed this week so that you could enjoy some of the artistic talents of our students. But I would like for them to talk a little bit about their program.
Good evening, board members and guests. Hello, my name is Sangai Theng and I am an eighth grade violinist. Usually, people join orchestra because they think it's cool. But what they don't really realize is that at their young age, they, they had to learn it for their skills. And what I didn't realize is that violin, the violin, is the hardest instrument to play. People that play here at Edison didn't give up yet because they actually have fun. They want, they have like, have fun, they play music, that's their favorite, they play harder pieces, and lastly, they want to become very good at it. So, that's why kids like us want to join orchestra. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name's Daniel Skura and I play percussion for the seventh grade band. And there are a lot of things I like about band, but one thing I really enjoy is hearing the progress that we make on a song. When we get a new sheet of music and play it for the first time, you can guess it doesn't sound the best. But we keep playing it over and over again. Then, in just a few days, you can already hear a lot of improvement. And we keep practicing until we get to play it for the last time in front of an audience, sounding almost perfect. When I'm in band, it feels like each of the band members are like a puzzle piece and you need everyone together for the song to sound complete. And I love being part of this, this picture that is Edison Band. Thank you.
All right, since we are the very first board meeting of the year, obviously, I thought, I mean, last spring, when I knew you'd be coming here, I thought, hmm, who's going to be ready to perform or speak or show off what they've been doing? And I thought, who better than our advanced orchestra players and our marching band who performed over the summer? So, they have one of their marching band songs to play for you tonight. Before they get started, I just want to say thank you to our orchestra director, Lisa Booley, who's here with us, and Jill Carr, who is our band director. So, thank you all for coming and thank you to all of our musicians. Thank you to all the students tonight. That was a wonderful way to start our meeting. Can't think of a better way than having the orchestra students playing as we walked in and you guys being the kickoff for the beginning of our meeting. Thank you so much. Next is modifications to the agenda. Does anybody have any modifications? Okay, next up is board president report, and I'm going to keep it short. It's a celebration, it's our first meeting since, outside of Hubble, since March of 2020 in a school. And I think this is a great way to, a great way to kick us off. Fresh off the press, I just found out as I opened up my folder tonight, we are one of thirty-three schools to receive the board governance recognition again. Our fifth or sixth, I don't know, I'm trying to remember. Fifth? Sixth? Our sixth one. So, congratulations to my fellow board members. We will be honored at the division meeting, which I believe is the first week of November. I know several board members will be talking tonight during the, other reports from board members about visits to their schools if they've made any. I had the opportunity today to go to Whittier. For those of you who don't know, I taught at Whittier. That's how I started my career in District 200. It was great to be home. I got to visit all three of my classrooms that I had there. Actually, I was in most of the classrooms today and it was really great. Couple of things that I, I got to see, I saw the sale program. I was not familiar with that program prior before and I got to go to primary and the intermediate classrooms. And the best part of starting my day was several of the sale students in the intermediate classroom, soon as I walked in, just came over and gave me a big hug and can't think of a better way to start the day. I did get to see math and I invited myself back to come back and see more math because that is my, was my favorite subject to teach. But I had students today explaining to me how they were coming up with figuring out factors for numbers and, you know, it was, it was an interesting lesson to see. You know, it's, it's, I feel like we've gone back to, it was very collaborative. Every classroom I walked into that was doing math today was extremely collaborative. There was no teacher standing up at the front of the room and teaching. It was kids working together and coming up with their own ways and sharing back with their students in their own language, how they came up with problems. So, it was really great. I also got to see plans for the new Whittier library. And that was exciting to, to see as well, how that would transform, having been a teacher who taught right off of that library out of classroom. It was nice to see how they were, how they were going to be doing all of that together. So, other board members, if you've had an opportunity to visit schools since our last meeting, please, please share that as well. And then move on to public comment. Okay, in accordance with board policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment sheet was made available till seven P M. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. We do have a few people signed up for public comment. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not discuss, directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following board, following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per board policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened. We do not need to do that tonight. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. I'm going to ask tonight for, please have respectful dialogue as you are sharing your comments. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to three minutes. We don't have our timing system here, so Mr. Hanlon will raise his hand as you hit your three-minute mark and we'll ask you to please finish that up. Be factual and courteous. Do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. So, the first person up is Kristi Lefemin, Lefemina? Thank you.
Hello. All right, good evening. My name's Kristi. I have three kids, one at Wheaton North, two at Sandberg Elementary. Our school board is critical. It's valuable, it's essential. It's, it's our success story and it's our legacy, meaning what are we setting up for our kids? There's so much to talk about, there's so much work to do. And my question is, what's your why? At the end of the day, when you go home from a meeting, when you go home at the end of the work week, why are you, why do you do this? What are your intentions? Would they be the same intentions for your children? Are your children in this district? I don't know these answers, I don't need to know these answers, I just feel it has to be asked. The intentions of our meetings, the intentions of our school board is to provide the best educational opportunity for the children of this district. Are we doing that? Can you look through your notes, week in and week out, and say, I did my best? I didn't get caught up on a political agenda, didn't get caught up on my pocketbook, I didn't get caught up on whatever catches you up? Because I'm not convinced that our district is putting our kids first. Please, I pray you do. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ryan Kipfer.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Kipfer. I was a resident of this district for ten or twelve years. I now live in St. Johns County, Florida, and I apologize for my appearance. I usually dress a little nicer for these things, but as my schedule worked out, I didn't have a chance to dress up. I, since I've been gone, I've tried to keep up on the school board and this is only the second meeting I've attended since I moved in March. Tried to make a third, I just wasn't able to make it work. Since I've left, I've also, I've found out that this, the board appointed a new member and I would like to congratulate the board on making probably the most personal and politically biased decision I've ever seen in a school board. I reviewed the voting records and I couldn't find any odd year election that the current board member appointee had voted in, thus making it impossible for her to have voted in a prior school board election, despite there being ten other or more candidates. We, you chose for political and personal reasons to choose a candidate who had never even voted in a school board election. That's a matter of public record, you could have looked. And it continues this board's pattern of endorsing candidates who have conflicts of interest with the school district, conflicts of interest through business deals, you know, tied into other school districts, and the school board continues to endorse these candidates. I would like for this school board to continue the prior speaker's question of why and ask yourselves why. Why are you doing this? Are you doing this for political reasons? Are you doing it for personal reasons? Why are you doing this? Why? Why are you here? Do you, are you here for the students? Are you here because you've just been here for a long time and you feel like this is where you belong? To see this board's voting history and the decisions they've made is not only disappointing, it's sad. It's legitimately sad. I know there's people who are sitting on this board right now who voted to keep school books in the school that are, have pornography in them. And I know some of you thought long and hard about that, I don't think a lot of you did, but the ones who thought long and hard about it and voted to keep it, why did you do that? What was your reasoning? Did you try to find out why? You know, in this, for the millionth time, there's no book banning, it's judicious use of the school's resources, something this board has an obligation to do and judiciously use the school's resources to provide books that are educational to children. I'll continue to work for this school district from far away as best I can. It means a lot to me. I worked really, I thought I worked hard for these kids, I encourage my kids to do well. And I, I encourage you, seven people and the administrative staff, to think about what we're doing. Are we enabling the future to become anti-American or are we trying to help these kids learn? So, thank you, have a good evening.
Next up is Michael Myers.
Hello, Michael Myers. I have two kids who attend Wheaton Public Schools. I read a very alarming statistic from the Illinois Report Card website last week indicating fifty-three percent of all our students in District 200 did not perform at grade level in math last year, meaning our students are suffering academically. It's not satisfactory, it must change. And I know a lot of people are going to be watching this online, so I'm presenting some visuals for them to raise my other concerns. But it's been eight months since this district has been notified that there is a book that violates board policy and now provides minors access to pornography in our libraries. It's not appropriate, it must change. I was shocked that a mother told me that her senior high schooler tried to access Gender Queer on the student Chromebook was blocked, thankfully, and I'm wondering, why can't we have similar filtration systems in place for our libraries? Which is why this next graphic shows it's been eighteen years, Dr. Schuler, since the selection policy for learning resources has been updated. It's not acceptable, it must be changed. And board members, if you continue to delay on making changes to these three areas of concern, then we, the parents, are looking forward in two hundred and two days to electing new board members who will put the academics and the protection of our children as their main priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next up is Patty Cross. Kurt Bremel.
I'm Kurt Bremel, have a daughter who just graduated and, let's see, my son, my oldest is a junior and then my youngest is a freshman. Over the years, I've been dropping kids off at, well, Franklin. And I'm an engineer by trade and we do hazardous, hazops for all of our equipment going in in these places I work. And I can't help but think like an engineer and look at the traffic situation and see a disaster waiting. And I'm putting it on warning to this board, you are waiting for an accident to happen by doing nothing. I sent a presentation to somebody over at the school last year outlining the danger of the parking on Scott Street. That's the seventh grade door. When people drive up, and I've, I've watched it numerous times, they cannot drop because the school has a sign that says, do not drop, do not pick up or drop off on that on Scott Street. Now, I also got a tape measure out and it's fourteen feet, seven inches from the sidewalk to the curb. Why don't we cut, do a curb cut all the way along Scott Street? And then cars could be driving southward, pull over, and their kid could get out without touching the street. I know for a fact that there have been several accidents and we are waiting for a death to happen if we don't do something about this. So, I'm asking, I'm pleading with the board, please look into it. I will send my, my slide deck to you guys to review it, but I'm serious, this is a tragedy. Two years ago, or three years ago, I dropped my son off at Longfellow and it was really cold out and I saw kids slipping on the ice. There was a bad gutter. And so, I walk up and I fell, but I wouldn't stop until I got in that door and I found a janitor to spread salt. And as executives, we need to get out there and assure on a, on a bad weather day that this kind of stuff is taken care of. No one wants, we should, safety is essential. So, I ask you to take a look, I have both of these in my slide deck and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Addison Kipfer.
Good afternoon. My name is Addison Kipfer. I'm a former CUSD 200 student. I attended Lincoln, Sandberg, and Monroe Middle School. In the past year, I moved to Florida. Now, I attend school in St. Johns County and I see a world of difference. Since I moved to Florida, I feel encouraged and I want to learn. I have straight A's in all my classes. My E L A teacher noticed I was struggling with reading. Noticed I was struggling with reading and offered to help. Here, my language arts teacher had no idea I was struggling with reading because in sixth grade, I was virtual. And when I was in person, I was wearing a mask, so he had no idea I had difficulty. I have seen that a positive learning environment can provide so much more. Having a school and school district and school board that supports everyone is so much more encouraging. And to be completely honest, it really does help knowing that the school board is there for me. Please use the golden rule and treat others the way you want to be treated. Thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you, Ms. Kipfer. Next up is Amy Erickson.
Hi, everyone. It's Amy Erkinswick. I am in the district, I have five children, one of whom graduated from Wheaton North in 2021 and four who are still in the district. After the recent events pertaining to the school board's decision to retain in our school libraries the book Gender Queer and their admission of support for the blatant violation of their very own guidelines, I now fear for my children's future here. The laissez-faire attitude that the board members, administrators, and LLC staff have adopted in regards to lewd, vulgar pornographic, and sexually explicit materials being made available to our minors is frightening and entirely unethical. Our children's best interests certainly aren't your priority. Right on the Wheaton North homepage, it states, inspiring in everyone a passion to excel. In what, I ask you? Self-pleasure? Oral sex? Pedophilia fantasies? Sexual promiscuity? Sex toy use? Should these things not be kept private and reserved for a mature audience? Do these topics and images meet our standards as educators, as administrators, as citizens, as parents? I should certainly hope not. Recently, I posted images from this very book to a Wheaton Moms Facebook page and I immediately received a warning from Facebook. My post was removed and it was said to me that I had violated Facebook's standards for their community guidelines for nudity or sexual activity. I'm very disappointed and shocked to learn and come to the understanding that our school district's standards fall below Facebook's. If these words sound familiar to you, it's because they are an excerpt from an email that I sent to each one of you recently. On August twenty-sixth, I also sent it to both high school principals, I sent it to you, Dr. Schuler, and I sent it as well to both librarians at the high schools, and I received no response whatsoever. So, as much as you say that public comments matter to you, I would suggest that your lack of commenting back would say otherwise. But I'd like to just urge you to listen because this community really needs to feel heard. And to you, Angela, thank you for listening.
Okay. Next, that concludes our public comment. Next, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. Just a couple of things that I want to share with the board and the community tonight under my comments. Number one, starting next week at all of our schools, we're going to be partnering with, are supporting the Wheaton Lions Club and People's Resource Center. September is Hunger Action Month and so there'll be a collection, a collection bin at all of our schools to collect non-perishable food items to support that important drive. So, we just got the boxes out to the schools today. That'll be open starting next week. Second thing I wanted to mention in our, our board notes, we're going to send a link to some information out. Glenbard High School District puts an excellent parent series on every year. They have a number of speakers that they make available to parents and they've kindly opened that opportunity up to surrounding districts as well. So, again, in addition to opportunities that are available, right, within our own community, we're going to share that, that link out with the board notes and let our, our parents know they're certainly welcome to join. Starting very soon, we're going to be putting out some input surveys for our two elementary schools that will be doing playground project, replacement projects next summer. next summer. So that includes Bauer and Lowell Elementary School. So a, a, a part of the process early on is to gather some input from the, the community and from our students on some of what they're looking for in the new playground design, and so that's going to go out. Um, a, a quick recognition, congratulations to one of our art teachers in the district, Lauren Nielsen, who is an art teacher at Franklin this year, was recognized by her professional association as middle school art teacher of the year. We're going to be bringing Lauren to your next meeting for a board recognition, but I wanted to mention that tonight. Um, wanted to mention that invitations have gone out for our local elected official local, local partners breakfast that's taking place on October the 14th. That kicks off kind of our annual State of the Schools opportunity, and so those invitations hit the mailbox, hit mailboxes shortly if you haven't seen them. And then last, I just wanted to mention, as Mrs. Crabtree mentioned, I've had an opportunity to do two half-day building visits a week since the beginning of the school year, spent this morning at Franklin visiting classrooms, had an opportunity to see some math classrooms, some social studies classrooms, some music opportunities, foreign language. Again, just a great opportunity to be out, see some of the learning that's taking place, a few of the classrooms that are piloting, uh, new math instructional resources that are being used at our elementary schools, the same series that's being used, but the middle school version. So it was great to, to be out in those schools. And I'm at Lincoln tomorrow and look forward to continuing that tour. That's all I've got.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Acceptance of gifts from Lowell Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gifts from Longfellow Elementary School PTA, acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Cheerleading Program, acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Boys Basketball Program, acceptance of vendor contract generating revenue, approval of change order for Wheaton Warrenville South Paving Project, approval to submit Round One of the fiscal year 2023 School Project Maintenance Grant, approval of the Consolidated District Plan, approval of the Frontline Forecast Five Student Analytics Subscription and Startup Costs, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of Minutes April 24th, 2022 Open, and approval to destroy recording of closed sessions prior to April 2021 is allowable by law, approval of Personnel Report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information you'd like to ask?
No, just a huge thank you for the three gifts, or four gifts that the board is approving tonight. I had a chance this morning to visit with the PTA Council. They had their first meeting of the year, and I expressed to our PTA groups how much we appreciate their support and generosity toward our schools and your approval in a couple of those gifts this evening. And then second, just wanted to mention, board members had an opportunity to ask some clarification questions on a number of items from the, the consent agenda that I believe we were able to address, so.
Uh, board members, any questions or comments?
I just have one follow-up question. With the, um, the vendor contracts, and I'm not trying to harp on this, but I know it's not up for approval at this point, but will we revisit revising the approval for the Pepsi Coke contract?
We can certainly look at it next time it, it comes up. So I think the, the piece you're concerned about is the Pepsi contract. I'm sorry, she asked about the Pepsi contract. Uh, I, I think the piece you're concerned about is, is clearly an appendixy, but we can certainly work with, with Pepsi next time that contract comes up to make sure that it's addressed.
And does that come up this spring? Or?
Uh, I don't know when the, when we're up.
Just beginning year two.
Of?
I think of five.
Five?
Yeah. Um, I, because I still have some concerns about the high school level with that, and I know we've discussed that at length, but I, you know, perhaps it's something we bring and discuss if.
Absolutely. Happy to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one quick comment on the Consolidated District Plan. I, it's a great summary of all the work we do for kids and to secure the federal funding for all those, excuse me, different grants. So I just appreciate the detail we go into, and it's a good reminder as we go through, I guess for me, nine, nine years on the board, seeing all the work.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the final 2020, oh, sorry, went ahead of myself there. Um, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Uh, Mrs. McConaughey, can you please call the role?
Mrs. Batner? I'm sorry. Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Now on to our first action item, approval of the resolution to adopt the 2022-2023 budget. I see Dr. O'Keefe is walking up there. Dr. Schuler, anything prior?
No, I'm going to hand it, uh, right off to Dr. O'Keefe to take the board through a summary of where we are with the recommendation for the final budget.
Good evening. Uh, these changes tonight are based on the tentative levy, but I want to, excuse me, the tentative budget that was presented and made public back in June, but a few, a few pieces before we walk into the budget so that there's some common language and hopefully common understanding. So the budget's actually an intricate process as a whole because there's moving pieces all over the place, and there's not a single timeline essentially followed with all those moving pieces. So we operate on a fiscal year that is 7/1 through 6/30. It's the same fiscal year the state board operates on. It's the same fiscal year that TRS operates on. From an IMRF perspective, though, they operate on a calendar year. So you'll see something here a few pages on that specifically relates to IMRF, but IMRF is an independent retirement agency with no specific state oversight, so they have their own governing board, and they operate on a calendar year, which is a different timeframe than our fiscal year. And then on top of that, within each of our budgets on an annual basis, we've got two levy years in there. This budget is levy year 2021, so what you approved last December, the second half of that, those payments come in in August and September, and then it will include the levy that you, uh, that we'll ask you to approve in November, which are collections that will occur in May and June. So just a little background and highlights, we did not make any specific changes to the tax levy, but there is quite a bit built into the budget that's associated with the tax levy. So the levy collections for this fall, so the collections that have occurred so far in August and September are based on the levy that you approved last December. That aggregate levy was a 1.4% increase with, uh, on the operating side, it was actually more than a 6.5% decrease on the debt service side. So the actual amalgamation of a levy itself was a 1% increase compared to levy 2020. We have built in 5% into the levy for 2022. That 5% is based on one of two things, either a cap of 5% or CPI, uh, and CPI from December of 2021 was 7%. So we're under PTEL, which is the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. That prevents any public school district from asking more than 5% in aggregate or whatever CPI is for that given year. We have built 5% into the budget numbers, and we'll be bringing that information to you for levy approval in November. On the CPPR side of things, so I'm going to read something specifically to ensure that I've got accurate knowledge and I share it. CPPRT is this interesting nuance from five decades ago. So specifically, these taxes are revenues collected by the state of Illinois and paid to local governments to replace money that was lost by local governments when their powers to impose personal property taxes on corporations, partnerships, and other business entities were taken away. These taxes resulted when the new Illinois Constitution directed the legislature to abolish business personal property taxes and replace the revenue lost by local government units and school districts. So all the way back in 1979, a law was enacted to provide for statewide taxes to replace the monies lost to local governments, specifically that were tied to personal property taxes on corporations. So last fiscal year, we had a pretty significant increase in those collections, far beyond what was estimated by the Illinois Department of Revenue. We've actually, in our tentative budget, scaled back and used our budget from fiscal year '22. But when looking at and configuring our final budget, we added back in those specific taxes that were collected for last year, even though the Illinois Department of Revenue has actually anticipated that tax collections under CPPRT could be higher than usual. The Illinois Department of Revenue, as good as they are, are not terrific and perfect prognosticators. So instead of using a number that I'm not quite sure would actually be accurate, we just use what we collected last year, and that's where you see the significant increase in CPPRT. An overriding theme that you'll see throughout each of our funds is an increase in interest earnings, and I'll explain that in a bit. Back in August, we did receive our final evidence-based funding model and our numbers as extended by the State Board of Education, so that's another increase of roughly $288,000. A one-time reimbursement for expenditures that occurred in fiscal year '22 popped up on FRIS, which is the payment system that all of the public has access to, money coming directly from ISB, is identified in FRIS. So that's a one-time revenue source, but it's a revenue source that is applied to and pays for part of expenditures that have already occurred last year, so we've added that into the revenue side. And then we've updated on the revenue side and expenditure side all of our state and federal grants. So that's the education fund, which is our biggest fund, and updates on the revenue end. On the salary side of things, excuse me, on the expenditure side of things, quite a few moving pieces that we have to consider in addition to all the hires and everything that occurs over the summer. So I'll walk through these in a minute, but just some big picture factors that had to be built into the budget for this year. So on the salary side, within the ed fund, specifically contractual increases, 3.5% for our WWEA, 3% for our CEA and everybody else. Our benefit increases, uh, also, we also have benefit increases for the year. Our PPO went up 7.2%. Our HMO went up 5.6%, and our dental had a, a minor drop, but in essence, flat. So between, when you look at a 1.4% levy collection for the fall and potentially a 5% for the spring, average those out, it's a 3.2 over the year, which gets us to covering some, but not necessarily all of our increase in expenditures. So salaries, a lot of those salaries are attributed to three major areas, specifically a significant change in how we pay our substitutes. That was, that was brought forth, uh, and that was to a tune of roughly a half million dollars. And then a lot of other finality when it came to our special ed hires and our bilingual hires, where those are the three major components of the increases related to salaries. With salaries, there's always some form of benefits. These are specifically on the medical and dental side, so an increase. Uh, on the professional services side, we have more contracted services for this year to support our students, and then specifically adding in medic, anticipated Medicaid expenditures, which we actually end up getting reimbursements for in future years. Supplies, uh, this driver specifically was periodicals, online subscriptions, and software. Our capital equipment increase between tentative budget, final budget, uh, all tied to our federal grants and specifically ARPESR or SER III. Increase in tuition and other objects, that was a total increase of roughly $1.4 million for two reasons. One, some late bills that came in after June 30th that were for the prior fiscal year that now have to be paid this fiscal year, and then an anticipated increase in costs related to, uh, providing services to students outside of our district. That's that specific category. Non-capital equipment is, is an interesting one because it doesn't get used too often, but our capital limitation or our capital limit is $5,000. So anything that's $5,000 or above that we bring in is considered a capital asset. But we also have assets that don't fall into that category, and that's this non-capital equipment. So I don't actually see one in here, but think of specifically access, like Wi-Fi access, those devices. That's what this money is specifically for, and that's tied to our ARPESR grant also. And then finally, a small decrease in termination benefits. So overall, from an ed fund perspective, we're projecting about a $47,000 surplus. So we're almost dollar for dollar in an equal budget. On the O&M side of things, small increase in interest earnings, and again, I'll talk about that. Some minor changes in salaries and benefits along with purchase services. Those changes in purchase services are related to specific things that happened between when we published the tentative budget. So rotting out pipes at SSC because we've got water in the basement and the water isn't draining as it should. So outside contractual services is, is an example there. Small amount in supplies. And then on the capital expenditure side, uh, this, this is for two specific things. One, we have a rooftop unit, uh, at Monroe, so one of the two compressors went down. It's a significant weight compressor and a compressor that costs $22,000 for the compressor alone. So between that and the service necessary to, to get that compressor in, plus we're going to be doing some drainage work over at Longfellow. So specifically, uh, all of our drain extensions run out onto either the grass or, uh, our walkways, and we've hired a company, and the Longfellow PTA is doing some beautification work too, to bury all those underground and then tie those to the sewer so that during the winter and times when we have, uh, either slippery or adverse conditions, that water isn't sitting on top of the soil or on our sidewalks, it's being pushed directly into the sewer system. Overall, the O&M side, specifically, we're looking at about a million-dollar surplus, but there's two reasons for that. One, specifically, our capital project fund balance to begin the year was right around $900,000. Because of all the, all the work that we've done this summer, we're actually cutting that fund balance in half because we've only moved 7.2 million out of O&M into capital projects for this year. Having a half a million-dollar roughly fund balance in capital projects is fine, but we're already projecting that we're going to have an 8.1 or so million-dollar total expenditure for next summer. We'll certainly see where those numbers land after we go out to bid here in the near term, but, uh, we're certainly going to need to use any surplus that goes into O&M to pay for future, future projects in capital projects. So this is not money that's going to sit in a bank account and just accumulate. It's money we're already anticipating that we'll be using the next few summers. That's oversized, just some increase in interest earnings. On the transportation side, same thing on the interest earnings. Uh, we did have a significant increase in our transportation reimbursement from the state, so transportation reimbursement claims are due August 15th. Every year, Lisa Maher, who is our Director of Business Services, admitted that reimbursement claim, and then the numbers that came out of that claim necessitated for us to change the overall revenue side of things. We do have an increase in anticipated transportation expenditures. Two, as a reminder, our transportation expenditures for this year, we have a 13, excuse me, a 15.5% increase that we agreed to with Illinois Central, and then a 13% with Sunrise. Uh, so getting final numbers and final bus routes and all the number of participants that are required through the process necessitated us to expand our anticipated expenditures. Did the same thing on the extracurricular side, and then a little bit on the gas escalator side of, side of things too. And again, a gas escalator is only specifically now with Illinois Central. We're able to move that out of the contract with Sunrise, but it's a difference between what Illinois Central is paying at the pump and what we have defined in our contract, and our contract specifically is defined as $1.95. That $1.95 is from the contract when it was signed more than three years ago. We asked Illinois Central to remove that, and they said they'd be happy to, but they're going to add the $300,000 to the top line. So it's something that I anticipate will come out after we are done with this existing contract. So we have this year and next year, that's a total of five years, and we'll go out to bid as required by the State Board of Education, but it's something we just have to build into the budget for now. Few pieces in the other funds too, so. A second here. On the IMRF side of things, uh, and this is one of the caveats that I mentioned early on, specifically IMF rates are not calculated by the district, and they're not determined by the district or the board or anybody else. These are rates that are determined by the actuaries at IMRF, and this is an employer rate. So this is a specific rate that IMRF believes the employer needs to contribute to ensure that the fund of IMRF in totality has the right overall assets to take care of any retirees. So that specific rate reduction, uh, the rate that's in place for calendar year '22 right now is 8.91%. It's a pretty significant reduction, so almost a 25% reduction in the overall rate, moving down to 6.76 for next calendar year, even though there were some changes in salaries, there was that offset related to the reduction of this specific employer rate. So we left things status quo with IMRF. In the capital projects arena, so that's Fund 60, uh, we did increase our architectural fees. Uh, there is a lot of work that's being put together, including LLCs that you hear about here in a. about here in a few minutes, that we added to our expenditures, but we were also able to reduce our construction costs by a little bit more than $45,000 based on final contracts as paid out for all the work that we've done this summer. And beyond that, just a significant increase in working cash interest earnings, and I'll talk about that here in just a second. So overall, one of the major changes in the budget from the tentative side to now is interest income. Market was much different. Interest rates were much different back in May and June than they are today. The feds have taken action multiple times to increase the overnight rate, which in turn has increased not only rates that we pay for mortgages or for car loans, but also rates that we get from our money market funds and the other types of instruments that we invest in. Our tentative budget called for $118,500. We actually already surpassed that in the first two months. So obviously, it was time to do something about the revenue side of things, and talking with Wheaton Bank and Trust and looking at our numbers internally, we've bumped it up just about $750,000, and under the anticipation, that's a good number. I wouldn't be surprised if our results are better than that, especially if the feds go out and increase next week, like most people are anticipating, the overnight rate by either a half or 3/4 of a basis point. And every time that happens, there's a trickle-down effect in the market when it comes from interest Overall, now, our overall budget, the overall budget in and of itself, so all funds together, is $231.1 million. On the revenue side, on the expenditure side, it's $229.7 million. So the projected surplus from a totality of all funds is roughly $1.4 million. Our operating funds, which is everything but debt service and our capital expenditure account, is at $203.25 million in projected revenues, $194.5 million in expenditures. That leaves an operating balance of a bit more than $9 million. We have already transferred, or will be finished transferring, $7.2 million to pay for all of our capital projects from this summer, leaving an overall operating surplus projected at $1.8 million. Now, that's 1/2 of 1% of the total revenues from an operating side of things, so I don't believe it's anything significant. And again, there's really two big pieces behind that. One, significant change in interest earnings, especially in the working cash side. That's our piggy bank. So that's not something that we use for expenditures until we get loan funds in March, April, and May. So adding $675,000 into interest income on the working cash side, you back that out because that's not money that's used typically. We're closer to $1.1 million, and as I mentioned, we're about $1 million estimated to be over in O&amp;M, but I already know that that's going to be money that we need to pay for future capital projects. So the net effect, if we factor into certain comments like I just make, is we're almost dead even from an operating expenditure revenues to expenses. Questions? Sorry, Fast and Furious.
Any questions for Dr. O'Keefe?
Yeah, so thanks, Brian. And I did ask a few questions ahead of the meeting, and you covered those in the meeting. So appreciate talking about the multiple levels of increasing costs that have to be absorbed within the budget, which is capped. So I think, if I remember correctly, this is our 13th consecutive year of a balanced budget. Is that the right number?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So a long history of running balanced, or approving balanced budgets. You talked about the $1.8 million operating surplus. That's on the operating budget side. On the debt side, if I look at, I don't know what line or what page it was, but we've got a decrease in our debt service request over the last year by about $880,000. So the net increase, net impact to the taxpayer, sounds like it'll be less than that one point, or 1/2 of 1%?
Yeah, and that's shared between two levies. So your levy that you approved in 2021 was a 6.5% reduction on the debt service side, so almost $1 million on the debt service end, which is why when adding that into the conversation about a 1.4% increase, we got to a 1% net levy increase from last year. Already projecting what the debt service levy is going to look like for this November, that's a point and a half reduction. So another $250,000, $300,000 less that we'll have to bring into the debt service levy.
And so this is really a question, when we get to the levy, so this is just approving the budget, and in a few months, we'll approve the actual levy. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll ask this question again in November, December, because I ask it every year. So we have new growth in addition to that, and so in order to capture that new growth, which only benefits the taxpayers, to put more money, more property value on the tax rolls, we have to at least capture all of CPI plus to capture that new growth.
Correct. Yep, correct. So there's actually three pieces to that conversation. There's always CPI or what the board approves, and again, cap that 5% as you've indicated. There is new growth, and that's anything that was not on the tax rolls last January 1st of 2021 and is on the tax rolls January 1st of 2022. So that's all new properties, not new taxes to the overall taxing body. It's just new taxes to those specific taxpayers who did not have those properties on the tax rolls. And then the third piece for this year is TIF number two. Downtown Wheaton is actually coming off the books. So instead of those incremental taxes, when that TIF started to when it is final, instead of that going to the city of Wheaton for infrastructure improvements, that actually comes back to all the local taxing districts.
So those will all be conversations when we get to the levy conversation. And then one question, I guess, on page 16 of the budget. Can you talk about the supplemental levy in the debt service fund?
Yep. So that's a brand-new law that was passed in the state back in 2021. So in the past, after taxes have been paid, if there was a PTAB, which is the Property Tax Appeal Board, refund to the taxpayer or abatements that were approved after taxes were paid, school districts had no opportunity to recoup that money. So there is a specific number that is given to us by the DuPage County Treasurer's Office. They tell us what is available for the given tax levy year, and we are now able to add that to our overall budget. So it's not a new tax. It's recuperating old taxes, but the responsibility of figuring out how that actually works falls in the hands of the Treasurer's Office.
Of the county.
Of the county, correct. Thankfully, not us.
All right, thanks. I have no other questions.
Other questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe? Okay. I know we had a conversation on this with the tentative budget when we were in July, if I remember correctly, was that, and we were able to ask a lot of questions for that. So I ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the final 2022-2023 budget as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Long.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Blatner. Mrs. McConaughey, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Blatner?
Thank you.
Mr. Long.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mrs. Blatner?
Yes.
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 Motion passes. Next up is the Elementary English Language Arts Instructional Materials pilot. I see Mrs. Murphy is already up there.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present about our proposal for a pilot in English Language Arts for the elementary level. Tonight, I have four guiding questions to frame this presentation, starting with why District 200 is piloting new instructional materials for elementary English Language Arts. I wanted to start with some background information that I think is very important to the conversation. So first and foremost, in 2010, the new Illinois learning standards were adopted by ISB. Those are often called the Common Core State Standards. When those standards were first approved by ISB, there were no high-quality instructional materials that were aligned to those standards. And so most school districts did what District 200 did, and we created our own instructional resources. It wasn't until recently that high-quality instructional materials have become available that do align to these standards. And what I have heard from our District 200 teachers and administrators, that there is a need for ELA instructional materials. I'd also like to remind both the public and the board that this is a key strategy on our Vision 2026 strategic plan, specifically under learning acceleration, in that we have listed out that we're going to adopt and support the implementation of resources in K-8 core academic areas that ensure high-quality instruction for all learners. And high-quality instructional materials are the key strategy for learning acceleration for many reasons that I have listed all here. First and foremost, it creates strong coherence within a grade level and between grade levels. Second, it allows our specialists to better support students in co-teaching models. Third, it frees our teachers to spend their time differentiating and scaffolding learning rather than gathering and creating instructional materials on their own. Fourth, it increases equitable access to grade-level learning for all students. And then fifth, it provides strong assessment tools. And lastly, it provides resources for interventions that are aligned to classroom instruction that creates instructional coherence. So to sum up this slide, there's really a lot here, and I really would like to say, like, all six of these items, really, I could sum up in saying it's having high-quality instructional materials is like the key lever to ensure that the core academic instructional teaching and learning experience is at a high level. So second, what process has been used to select new instructional materials? We started this journey back in January, and at that time, principals and reading coaches all studied the ELA shifts that would be used to guide the selection process. These are based on best practices of instruction. Then, from March to May, our selection committee reviewed high-quality instructional materials that are aligned to those shifts, and they provided feedback. The feedback they provided was that they wanted the administration to go back and continue to look at more resources. And so in those summer months, we spent time. We looked at in total eight different instructional materials before we came back into the school year. We came back into the school year, and we brought the three instructional materials back in front of our selection committee that met the criteria that they had defined to us. And then that group selected the two that they felt are the best to pilot. Our next guiding question is which materials will be piloted in classrooms this year? There are, these are the two materials. The first is called Bookworms, and the second is called the American, well, it's called American Reading Core or ARC Core. It's often referred to. And these are both highly aligned to the shifts of best practices that the group studied. So those shifts are foundational skills, text complexity, evidence-based reading and writing, and knowledge building. Here you'll see the staff that are going to be piloting, or at least the range of staff that are going to be piloting. We asked every school to have both a primary teacher and an intermediate teacher, and when I say primary, we defined that as K-2, and when I say intermediate, we define that as 3-5. We also asked for a specialist to be involved in this pilot, and that's what you see in the right-hand box. And so at every school, the specialist will be serving in different kinds of roles. So our multilingual specialist and our resource teachers are paired with those classroom teachers that are piloting, so they will be doing some co-teaching experiences. Our PACE specialist and LLC directors really are serving in an advisory and consulting role. They've been involved in learning about the resources, and they'll continue to be involved throughout the pilot process and looking at those resources and giving feedback in terms of how they see those best working with their students and the programs they're involved in. And of course, our reading coaches are going to play a key and critical role in all of those classrooms. And then finally, what are the next steps after the pilot is complete? So the pilot will run from mid-October to mid-February, and teachers are going to pilot one module from each unit, or sorry, from each of the materials. We are anticipating bringing a recommendation to you in March. We are also, in the meantime, working with the rest of our staff on professional learning with those ELA shifts that I talked about with regards to what our principals and coaches and selection committee received. And we are going to be working closely with this pilot team in developing an implementation plan. So that implementation plan isn't just which of these two programs you believe is the best fit. That implementation plan will also include a lot of conversation about the timeline for implementation. That's going to be a really important component, especially for elementary, because, as you all know, we have just adopted a new resource for math. And so we recognize that this is a heavy lift, and so that pilot team is going to have to be very involved in that timeline and rollout for this instructional material as well. That team will also have to be very involved in helping us plan professional learning, and also, you know, other factors that could impact the implementation of these new instructional materials. Included in your board packet tonight is a recommendation to approve the pilot and the materials as presented. And at this time, I am happy to answer any questions. Questions for Mrs. Murphy? Anyone like to start?
Yeah, I'll go. On Slide 5, talks about freeing time up. So instead of spending time creating materials, they can spend time in instruction. We use terms differentiating and scaffolding learning. I don't know what that means.
Thank you for that question. So this means we are providing supports so that all students can be successful with those materials. We know in our classroom, we have a range of learners, and they're all at different levels. And so we know that we need to provide guidance and different materials as well to help and support the range of learners.
Perfect. Thank you. And then on Slide 7, there's a term that it used, you said ELA shifts. What's an ELA shift?
English Language Arts.
I got that.
Okay. And then shifts, if you look at Slide 9, where it talks about materials and those bullet points right there, those are the key shifts that we study that are aligned to best practice. So foundational skills, that would be defined as fluency, phonics, and phonemic awareness. Text complexity, that's making sure that's high-quality texts that are within the grade-level band. Evidence-based reading and writing has to do with making sure what we're reading about, we're writing about. And knowledge building, that's making sure that we are, what we're reading about is helping us learn about the world and helping us do, be able to be as successful in other content areas. So for example, these materials are all aligned to science and social studies topics. So the beauty of this is that because it would be a common set of materials, we would see students coming to like a school like Edison with a common set of experiences because they all studied, they all did a unit on the Civil War through reading. So that's that concept of knowledge building.
Okay. And then just a trigger for me. Anytime someone says best practices, I always want to know based on what, and what's the source of that best practice?
Absolutely. So first and foremost, the best practices that we refer to came from the research that sat behind the new learning standards in college and career readiness. And the Student Achievement Partners was another major source that we used for this work.
So those are sources we've used consistently, and got it. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Long?
So at the end of this, are we evaluating two different Bookworms and ARC, and we're going to pick one?
That is correct.
Okay. And then this change, are it's materials and teaching methods?
Correct.
Okay. And so how does, I guess, how does instruction change? How does the classroom look different with these tools compared to the existing tools?
So I'm going to best answer that question by going back again to Slide 9, where I talked about those bullet points. And so what I think will look different is, we are doing those things, but we aren't doing those things in all the same way across our school district at this point in time. And what this does is it helps us have that continuity and coherence. And what this does is it helps us have that continuity and coherence across our classrooms and our grade levels. And so what will also change is that there will be more opportunities to accommodate the range of learners that sit within a classroom. And I also believe another major change we'll see is in the space of writing, it was very important to us to honor the components of a portrait of a graduate with any of the materials that we're looking at. And specifically in the English Language Arts space, we know that communications is very important, and that was a key component we were looking for as a part of these materials.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions?
I have just two brief ones. On the third slide, it mentioned that the elementary teachers and administrators expressed the need for new ELA materials. And I was wondering how that information was obtained, if that was anecdotal, if there was surveyed, and if there were particular attributes that they wanted in this curriculum and if this matched it.
Most of that is through conversation. And so we have individuals that serve in every single school called a reading coach. And they are the main conduit between myself and the schools. And so they work closely with all of the teachers. And so this was what they brought to myself as a big need in conversations. Specifically, going back, the board may remember, we spent a lot of time talking about foundational skills before the pandemic, and we were looking at materials specifically for foundational skills. But then the reading coaches expressed the need that we needed resources beyond just that one component. And so they expressed that need also for materials for writing.
The other question I had is, I know we're not to the implementation phase yet, and so you don't know what supports or timeline would be expected, but are there certain things you envision might be part of that phase, and are those supports going to be provided in the pilot so that the feedback is consistent with what it might be like if we implement this?
So for both resources, the pilot teachers are going to receive professional development from the companies that, or the vendors or the publishers that put out these resources. So that will be a nice opportunity for us to experience the professional learning side of it. Another key component will be that our reading coaches will be partnering with the classroom teachers. And so they serve as the key individuals at a school that help with the professional learning, so that's going to be a good taste for them as well in helping create that implementation plan.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Blatter?
I have a couple. Thank you, Mrs. Murphy, that was wonderful. Trying to think of where I should start because it's a little all over the place. So both chosen curricula, and I kind of asked this question pre-meeting, I guess, if you can just explain to me better, there will no longer be leveled reading groups, yet there will still be differentiation? Can you kind of speak to that?
I will. I'm going to try my best not to, I mean, simplify it as much as I can without getting too much into teacher language. So both of these programs have a time in that English Language Arts block that is called differentiation, where teachers meet with small groups of students based on their needs. And so a lot of the research that has recently come out, especially around the science of reading, which was something that we studied, talk about the need to intervene at a student's level for their foundational skills, which is really the phonics piece of it. And so that small group instruction would be very focused on where their individual need is. And it would also be about applying what they're learning in that phonics lesson to texts that are aligned to those phonics skills. So they're applying not just the phonics lesson, but they're applying it to text. So that's a lot of the small group instruction. It would also entail, the differentiation time would also be a lot about students reading books more independently at their instructional level as well. So I think those are like the key components.
So students won't be grouped based on reading level, they'll be based on reading skill, right?
It would be more encompassing of multiple different areas, not just one, like, reading level, which is mostly what our practice has been. It would be also about their level in foundational skills. It may be about writing. It would be larger group of skills we'd be looking at.
Okay, thank you, that actually helped. So if the transition is going to take place mid-October, how's that look for the classroom that is bringing that onboard? Is there a sudden switch? Are they missing something? Like, is there a gap? How's that going to work?
So each reading coach is going to work with their classroom teacher on that piece, but I think this is what makes the experience in English Language Arts a little different than math. When math is like a sequential set of skills that you need to learn, ELA is more all-encompassing, and you're really working on a set of skills multiple times throughout the year. So I think that there's a little bit of difference in that.
So to take that further, come mid-February, will the classroom experience change for those students who are in those programs? So when it ends, what their experience during the day will look like will be different? Will the teacher go back to using whatever it was?
Yeah, those are all conversations that we need to continue to have with that pilot group. So what, for example, with math, a lot of our pilot teachers chose to continue with the IM resource once we knew, they knew that that was the resource that we were going to be adopting. And so in this case, that might be a consideration that we would take as well. So, but I think the important thing to take away is that those are very important conversations that we will be having with this pilot team and with our reading coach support for those teachers as well.
And then the reading coach support, so in a building, will there be reading coaches who will only do the pilot? Or will they be bouncing to other classrooms? You know, are they going to be expected to have to address needs from both different curricula? Does that make sense?
Yes. So we have organized the pilot so that a school will do, so for example, let me just take Whittier. Whittier, the two teachers will be doing the same program at the same time so that reading coach is able to support those teachers with that same set of materials at the same time.
But would that reading coach then also be supporting other classrooms who are doing the non-piloted curricula? Just curious.
Yes, their day would be filled with a combination of supporting those pilot classrooms and working with other students and working in other classrooms.
Thank you. Two last quick things. There, in looking at both programs and asking beforehand, there's a cost difference between the two. Can you explain why there's, I'm, not being an educator, I am confused, or what's the incentive for Bookworms to provide this curriculum at minimal cost? Like, where do they recoup their?
Bookworms comes from what's called open resources, and there are several open resources. And so those materials have been made available for teachers, particularly the teacher-facing materials, free of cost. So we would still need to purchase the books that students are reading. American Reading Company isn't falling into what they call open resources, so everything would need to be purchased. So all of the teacher-facing materials, the student materials, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. So my, I was led to that question because over the last three weeks, whenever I run into a teacher that I know who is in elementary, I ask like, "How's math going?" Like, "How's math going?" You know, and it's a big change, and I haven't, you know, granted, my sample size is anecdotal and small, but I haven't heard anything negative other than that, you know, it's a change, it's challenging, it's work, which I know we all anticipated. But the one thing that I've heard more than once is that, and maybe we can get an estimate of what this would cost, is that the manipulatives, like the packets that students use during different modules, have not been provided, that classrooms are kind of making their, or their, yeah, I've kind of, I've heard this a couple times. And I think one PTA is going to purchase them for the schools. I'm just curious why we're not providing that.
Here's the accurate answer on that. So math manipulatives were something that our classrooms had for many, many years. I can speak to this as a former elementary classroom teacher. My classroom was filled with math manipulatives. Over time, those have gone missing, and different amounts have gone missing over time. This is something that we found out, our teachers expressed to us before the adoption, and we did actually survey every school. We collected lists from every school. The math coaches did that work, and we purchased exactly what they had requested from every single school to be sure that they had the math manipulatives that they needed. And so if that is still something that's a concern, we set up a feedback group. They're going to be working with and meeting with Danielle Moran on a monthly basis, and so I would like to hear if that's something that's still a concern, and we can work to get them what they need.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I had. Thank you so much.
Any other questions before I go?
I have a, I just have one. Oh, I'm sorry. Wendy, first, thank you very much for this. I really appreciate the work, and I appreciate all the teachers who are participating in the pilot. I'm just curious, you know, as someone who's not an educator, when you're looking at these two curriculums, what, and if this is not an easy question to answer, then you can, we can table it, and, but I guess, kind of, what kind of differences are you looking at between the two systems? Is it the materials? Is it the way you teach it? Like, I'm just not sure, like, what the differences are that they're looking for that would make one a clear winner over the other? Does that make sense?
Yes. So both materials align to the same educational philosophy, but there are slight differences. So there's differences in the materials that the teachers would receive for the foundational skills component. There would be differences in what the students would receive for the foundational skills component. There, between Bookworms and ARC, there is a stark difference that results in a cost. ARC, part of ARC's philosophy is providing a library for the classroom. So that's a big difference as well. One of the resources is pretty easy to utilize in terms of a teacher, the teacher-facing materials are very digestible and easy, and that has led to strong implementation in school districts that have adopted that program because the student-facing materials, or sorry, the teacher-facing materials are just very easy to pick up and use. The other is not as quick and easy to use. Those are some examples.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I got a few questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Paulson, do you have another?
Yeah, just one question, really kind of around the next steps, I guess. If you go to that slide, the last two bullet points, I'm just questioning on the timing. So we're going to go through this pilot, bring to the board a recommendation in March, and then after that, we have to go through the implementation plan, the professional learning that happens. Do we think we're going to be able to implement this in the fall of 2023? Is there some questions about that? Because really, in two months, it sounds like April, May.
Correct. This is why that group is going to be really key in helping us develop that implementation plan. We have always said from the beginning of this that we believe this is going to be a multi-year rollout. And one of the things that we have begun to think about is we would actually start with the professional learning for the staff first. And another component we have talked about is because English Language Arts has so many multiple components to it, right? So there's the phonics block, there's the reading part, there's the writing part. We've also talked about the thought that they, we may just pick one of those sections first to begin with. And so we certainly know that it's not going to be like the traditional adoption and just get, hit the ground running completely. We are already thoughtful in a multi-year rollout, and, you know, different components and the way that could look. But I think the very most important part of this is the conversations and collaboration with the teachers and getting their input on how that would work best for them.
So I guess just a follow-up question. And I think somebody asked this before the meeting, but if we're not going to implement everything in the fall of 2023, does it make sense to spend a little bit more time, maybe not just one unit, a second unit, to evaluate those materials? Is there value to help make a little bit more of an informed decision?
I think there could be, and that's why I believe there might be an opportunity that I would, or there might be the chance that I would be coming back to the board and saying, "This is the material that the group all feels is the best, but we may want to continue piloting to learn more about that material." So.
That makes sense. And just, I guess, a second question. So we're also implementing new, or piloting new instructional materials in math, right, at the same time, but that's?
Not piloting, implementing.
They're implementing math, elementary, middle.
Elementary.
So there's, my point is, there's been a lot placed on these teachers in terms of new instructional materials over the last couple of years. At the same time, we're dealing with everything following the pandemic.
Correct. And I do want to emphasize this, that selection committee, they are very excited to get the ground running, get on, you know, get the ball rolling, and they see the urgency for this. So we don't want to stop because we feel like there is an urgency for it, but we also know we have to be considerate of how much change staff can take. And so it's going to be a lot of conversations and working collaboratively with the team.
I appreciate that, having been a former elementary teacher and understanding all those different preps and that, that our staff has. And I also appreciate that you're not sticking to, "We must adopt this and go with next fall," and are going to be listening to what the teachers and that have to say. I do have a few questions. And so my first one is, ties back to Slide three. In 2010, the new Illinois learning standards were adopted. Do we have any concern that that was 12 years ago, that those standards are not going to change again in the near future? Do we know that, that we're going to throw all of our resources towards that for something that's older?
I have heard absolutely no talk of that.
Okay.
The only talk I have heard that we have followed closely with our work is around the research that sits with the science of reading. And I know that that's something that has been part of conversations that are beyond just school districts, so.
A few other questions, too. So each of the pilot teachers are going to complete a module. Is it the same module? So, okay, so the same module for, like, so everybody's going to go through, let's just say it's a more phonics-based instruction. Everyone's going to do that, and then everyone's going to do, maybe it's more of a fluency-based instruction, something, you know, like in the other one, they're all doing the same?
Yeah, we brought, we bought materials for every grade level. And so, so first-grade teacher at Madison may be piloting those materials first, and first-grade teacher at Wheeze Brook, and then they're going to flip those materials.
Okay. Couple other things, too. So as I looked at, so Slide 10, I had a concern at our intermediate, more of the intermediate, the fourth and fifth grade. We only have three fourth-grade teachers piloting this in the entire district and four fifth-grade teachers. Is that, we couldn't find, or did we feel that was insufficient based on enrollment at those?
We defined intermediate as three through five.
Okay.
And so when we asked our principals to select a primary teacher and an intermediate teacher, we defined that for them as K-2 and 3-5.
I just wondered, you know, like at fourth grade, for example, we only have three people giving us feedback in the entire district. If we needed to look at a larger, a larger group, that was a concern that I had. And then the specialists that are piloting, they're at the same schools where these are being piloted, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Going back to, as we talked- Going back to, as we talk about materials, so I'm understanding, this is, this would be like what we would call maybe, we used to call them like a basal program? Am I right in?
It is not a basal program.
It is not a basal program, okay.
No.
Help me understand what they are, then.
Yes, this is a good question. So there, things have advanced a lot since the days of the basal program. So there are both teacher manuals and there are student, well, there's teacher-facing materials and there's student-facing materials. So the teacher-facing materials are manuals, and then for the students, they would receive actual trade books. That's what's different than the days of the, like Anthology that had all the books
Yeah.
in one text. There would be workbooks, and as I said, with the ARC program, there are library books, like for a classroom library.
And then my last question kind of is about supports, and, and Mrs. Blatner brought up, where she's heard about math and I have as well, from staff as well, that, that it is, that they maybe don't have, they feel like they don't always have all the supplies that they need, and it is a pretty big, being more conceptually based learning. It requires a lot more prep. And so I'm, you know, cognizant of that and thinking about this program as well, especially if we are using more text, like books, actual books versus, you know, a short story that's in, in something. Is there ways, in thinking about these, if they are back-to-back years and understanding that our elementary school teachers have a lot of prep, and this being even more prep, are there ways we can help support them with some of that prep? And I don't know what that looks like. Maybe it's summer stuff, organizing and, and things like that. So if we could just be making sure we're, we're asking that so that we're not totally overloading our elementary teachers with these two major part-of-their-day programs, possibly back-to-back years?
Absolutely.
That's all I had. If there are no other?
I have a follow-up.
Yep, go ahead.
So, so in a couple of the anecdotes, we heard about teacher feedback to board members. So I'm curious what the standard process is for a teacher to provide feedback, not only for the programs like this, but just in general, right? So if they don't have the materials in their room, how does that get communicated and resolved so it doesn't have to come to a board member?
Great question. So I would say there, the first person they should talk to is the coach, math coach or the reading coach. They also have a school administrator who has direct contact with me as well. So those would be the two best people to have those first conversations with. Of course, people are certainly also welcome to contact next Danielle Moran, who is the Director for Elementary Instruction, and of course, I take those, you know, reports as well.
Yeah, I just want to encourage it.
Yeah, can I just put a clarity on that? There, there's a process for each of those feedback loops. So it's not just that those people are available. Your math coaches in every building come over every Friday morning to provide feedback to the district. Danielle has set up a feedback loop specific for teachers to tell us that if there's something that they're, they're missing. So I didn't dismiss the feedback that's coming to board members, but there are very specific structures, and I would, would continue to encourage board members to, if a teacher tells you that, to guide them right to that feedback loop. And, and again, there, there is no material that a teacher needs that we're not going to provide or buy for them. If we are missing something, we will do it. And I've also seen in classrooms that, right, when you, so some of the materials, you're using, you know, these like cubes, right? When you're dealing with volume and different shapes, there are 10 different versions of cubes that are out there. So I was in a fifth-grade classroom where it wasn't that they didn't have it, the particular type of cube that they had just didn't work well for the lesson that they were doing the first time through. And so that building recognized, we have, we have to get some different versions of the cubes. So again, just, just know from the board side, it is not about not providing anything, whatever they need to effectively deliver that math curriculum, we're gonna provide for them, and we just gotta keep pushing them through those feedback loops.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
And Rob, I just want to be clear. I asked, like, I asked, you know, how's it going? What could make it easier? No one was coming to me with a complaint.
It's still, we should redirect them back into the process, right? It shouldn't come up with the board meeting that you talked to. I mean, it just, it needs to go back into the process. If we don't have a consistent process, there's no way to get that feedback in, into the system. That's just my point. That's all.
And my, and my point in bringing it up was that if it's a monetary issue that, in, in spending, that's something that maybe we would need to pursue.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I, and I think I-
Perhaps I shouldn't have brought it up as, I heard it anecdotally.
We could have asked offline, right?
Yeah.
That's all.
And again, no, I, we, I hear that from the board. I hear the, I hear the resource availability, know that. We hear the, the resource availability. And I think part of a pilot, last little piece of it, I'm gonna say, on so many levels, as you're going through an implementation of a new program, the goal is to have as many feedback loops as possible. So we mentioned the formal ones. Again, I'm, as, as I'm out in, in buildings, that's what I've spent the majority of my time, is going into classrooms and having that very conversation to say, do you have what you need, right? How's it going? What can we provide for you? So I think the more feedback loops you can have, the better.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else before we?
Can I just make a little summary comment for me? So we heard a little bit earlier tonight about our focus on students. So when we pilot new curriculum, talk about the process, talk about the tools and resources, we talk about the concerns we might have of, you know, the, the timing and the tools needed for professional learning for, for our teachers, that's all about our students, giving them the resources to increase their academic achievement, have different experiences, have different personalized or differentiated instruction in the classroom. All of this is about what can we do for students to align with our work plan and strategic plan. So I just thought it'd be worthwhile to point that out.
Okay. I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the Elementary English Language Arts Instructional Materials Pilot.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Blatner.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. McConaughey, can you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Next up is oral reports, the Johnson Elementary and Whittier Elementary LLC updates.
Dr. O'Keefe is coming up to the podium to, to kind of kick it off. I think, one thing I just wanted to mention right at the onset, right, before we get into a little bit of a, of a show and tell. So I take the board back to the 2017 Master Facility Plan. And a part of that Master Facility Plan was looking at the library learning centers in each of our schools and recognizing the, the various programmatic or learning elements that take place now inside of that space, right? It's not, it's no longer a place that students are only going to check out a book or access a resource. So many of the collaborative experiences and the essential experiences we outline in Portrait of a Graduate are taking place in, in various learning areas around a, a school building. And so we had a unique opportunity that really came to us to look at two of those spaces from two different places. One, on the south side of Johnson Elementary School, we got a grant that became available to us that we could put toward the Library Learning Center. And then at Whittier Elementary School with the new development that is actually in Naperville, but inside the, the Whittier boundary, we've got a short-term opportunity through some of the impact fees that are collected to direct them into, to Whittier. So we had some funding sources that kind of created an opportunity to tackle two projects that I guess I would kind of call a pilot, look at how we can renovate those spaces with ultimately a goal of building a playbook similar to what we did with our playground projects. So, Dr. O'Keefe, anything else you want to mention on the front end, or you want to just introduce our LEGA team and?
Introduce and have a great little, one of, one of our three new members of the LEGA team that's doing work for us, happens to come from our own side of things. So Paul Pasetti, to my far right, is our lead architect and has been working with the district for multiple decades. Paul oversees all response, that means you're getting hold of Paul, yes. All responsibilities from the LEGA side with our district. Kelsey Jordan, who is right there in the middle, is one of the designers and has been working on the projects at LLC, our LLC projects. And then one of our own, a graduate of Wheaton Warrenville South of 2017, Zach Nichols, who's gonna walk you through the presentation tonight.
Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Zachary Nichols, and I've been working for the Whittier Schools and also Johnson with Paul Pasetti and Kelsey Jordan. Tonight, we will start by looking at the early research we conducted with the teachers and students. This leads into an evaluation of said research alongside our planned and design intervention. Then we will, we will show how these designs and implementations, or, or designs are implemented into the two LLCs. And finally, I will cover the remaining timeline for these two projects. By conducting, conducting early surveys with the community, it allowed us to, it allowed us to conceptualize what the students and teachers wanted and needed for the different spaces. Following the surveys, we conducted interviews with the students, asking the same survey questions, including, what is their favorite spot in the library and why? What is their least favorite spot in the library and why? And then draw on a floor plan of how they want their new library to look. This allowed us to better understand the link between community and student needs. We found that the spaces needed to be revitalized to fit future needs. As this transformation began to occur, we wanted to move out of the past and into, and into the future. These design changes suggest adapting the functionality of the existing library programs to fit these present-day needs. On the left in orange, we see how these libraries have typically been utilized, while the right in blue shows us how libraries are changing. We are advising that the programs within these spaces follow this paradigm shift into a collaboration-driven ideology with flexibility to fit the needs of students and their success. These proposed spaces allow the library paradigm shift to occur. Open spaces allow for a 360 view of the space, promoting safety and security through visibility. Reading nooks provide a secure and comfortable environment for students to read and study. Breakout rooms provide enclosed and open spaces, allowing for loud and quiet collaboration. Genius bars become the forefront of technology needs, housed with information regarding proper care and repair of electronics. Circulation desks allow a visible space for a student to find assistance or instruction, and where librarians can provide support to them. And student hubs are various scaled flexible spaces intended for fun and exploration. All these spaces provide an enticing place for students to gather. These conceptual spaces allowed our team to come up with a modular kit of parts. This provided a range of opportunities for casework and furniture to be utilized to a high degree of efficiency and functionality. Modularity creates district standard, but allows the libraries to stand out from one another based on their needs and goals. These modular, modules are located around the perimeter walls of both spaces to maximize the amount of open, flexible space within. The Johnson LLC is organized off a datum that stretches down the existing corridor through the atrium into the back windows of the library. The new entrance stems from the main corridor and provides high visibility in and out of the library. As we enter the space, the immediate side walls house televisions, charging stations, and bar stool countertops, creating a genius bar and student hub. Stepping further into the space, there are open and closed collaboration spaces seen within the different breakout rooms and flexible workspaces. Alongside the exterior walls of the space, you can start to see the intervention of the kit of parts as modules, modules are coordinated together to fit the LLC needs. Workspaces, reading nooks, and storage areas are implemented in these locations. The circulation desk, reading stacks, and other furniture is all movable, allowing the users to make their space their own. In the planned right portion of the library, we are filling in the lower mezzanine floor to be level with the rest of the space, which is optimal to creating an equitable space for those with disabilities. It also allows it to become its own space as a teaching corner for the librarians. In order to diffuse the noise created throughout the library, we plan to put acoustic ceiling tiles back in its original spot, complemented with modern LED linear light fixtures. We also plan on installing acoustical ceiling baffles and acoustical likes, lights alongside the tile as not only an aesthetic change, but functional to the mitigation of those high noise levels. The flooring within, within this space will consist of two luxury vinyl tiles that have a wood grain finish. This mimics the environment and efforts to bring more natural elements into the built space. Similar to the other flooring projects throughout the district, we also plan to add logos at the entrance and within the teaching corner. To wrap up Johnson, we created a video for you guys to see.
Can I ask, as we're looking at this, is this within the same footprint that the library is now?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Unlike Johnson, Whittier has a unique shape leading to the two maiden datums entering from the corridors and branching off to the different classrooms. In efforts to maximize the space, we removed the first set of doors out of the library, extending the program of the library out into the corridors. Off these hallways are new windows looking out into the courtyard space in efforts to bring more natural light into the LLC. We also removed walls enclosing, enclosing an existing room to the north of the plan, allowing that space to become a more intimate learning zone, similar to the teaching corner at Johnson. This space does not, does not have breakout rooms, but there are pockets of room in the corners that can be filled with flexible seating to promote collaborative studies amongst student peers. Once again, we can see the casework along the perimeter of the LLC. However, this begins to bleed into the corridor space as is necessary to maintain the coat hook storage for the individual students. Johnson has a lot of natural light coming from the existing ground floor and dormer windows. We want to mimic this with Whittier. So we are currently investigating whether, to propose a solar tube system that captures the sun's radiance and transfers, transfers it through a typical light fixture, or we could propose a series of skylights to capture the same effort. There are trade-offs for each system, so we are collaborating with the staff to see what works best to fit their needs at once. We plan on including the same acoustical baffles and lights to diffuse the unwanted sounds from within this space. And just like Johnson, we will include the same two luxury vinyl tiles, accompanied by the school's logo within the entrance. There's also striping outside of the classroom doors as a concept of wayfinding throughout the space. The classrooms will also receive this new flooring as an alternate bid. The layout follows the same standards we have seen, or we have been installing at other Wheaton Warrenville schools. And then we have another walkthrough for Whittier. This is also within the same existing footprint. After getting feedback and working with the staff, we hope to wrap up final design elements to get our construction documents ready out to bid by October 3. The, the final contract will be approved in November with the goal to start construction in the beginning of June, so the new spaces can be utilized within the beginning of the next school year. Once again, we would like to thank everyone for their involvement in the design development of these new spaces and hope that it will become a strong standard for the remaining schools within the district. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Yes.
Can you, can you talk conceptually about the integration of technology into the LLCs? Not specifically these designs, but conceptually, what are you looking for? What are you trying to achieve? What should we look for in terms of technology integration? Screens, projectors?
Mostly, mostly screens so that kids can hook up their individual Chromebooks up to the screen, and that way they can collaborate more within that setting. I know, I use that a lot in school back, because I just graduated.
Right.
So I think that's the biggest thing. And then also charging stations, and then knowing, like, how to repair, like, providing information on care and repair of their technology needs. And then also having the librarians within the circulation desk area to provide that support as needed.
Sorry, most of the time I'm loud. Other technology also includes checkout stations. So in both libraries, there's checkout stations, so the student doesn't necessarily have to go to the circulation desk. They can go to this checkout station and do that as well. The interaction, it's also been proposed to use these TVs that move up and down. So depending on if you have students that are on the ground, or if you have students that are standing and collaborating, and then like Zach said, too, it's very important that we have enough plug-in stations. So along these areas where we feel it's going to be heavy technology, we will be providing all the electronic needs there, all the plug-ins. providing all the electronic needs there, all the plug-in needs.
Rob, one thing maybe. I think you're getting it with the question too, I just want to clarify. So, I think in the design, it is kind of more available small group screen. So, not necessarily a space that's organized just around like whole classroom instruction, but multiple places throughout, right, the facility where groups of kids can come together or an adult can come together with a group of students, right, and have projection capability. Every student in the district does have a Chromebook now, so you don't need the fixed devices anymore. You need the ability to project, to collaborate, you know, with all of the infrastructures. It's more about infrastructure than, I think, equipment.
Yeah, that's fair. I just, you know, as we move into the, you know, whatever you want to call it, the next century or the next decade, that we continue to push that technology envelope a little bit, right? You know, it's, you can walk into a space and know someone didn't think about chargers and what have you, wherever you're at. And so, I'd just love us to push that a little bit.
Makes sense.
Thanks.
For sure. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I do. So, with the print materials, I mean, I can see that we still have bookshelves and stuff, but I'm wondering, is the amount of books that we have available, especially at the elementary level, is that going to be reduced because we're filling the space with lots of other things and stacks have to move out of the way in order to create that space? So, how, what's happening to the actual physical books?
Yeah. So, one, as a big part of the initial input, Kelsey and Zach and team worked to understand the size of our collection and what our staff have said in terms of what do we need moving forward. So, the space has been designed around what we need. The space, the collection is not going to be forced into a space that we've designed, if that makes sense. So, I don't anticipate the volume, the overall volume of the collection changing significantly. I mean, both of those schools, I think, have probably about 10,000 volume in the collection, and they'll have ample space to fit their collection.
Okay. So, that's not necessarily reducing or anything? Because I just, okay, just looking at the space.
It's going to look different, but it...
Well, yeah, yeah. Let me see if I wrote anything else down here. I mean, I think it's fantastic. As a former Whittier parent, I think it's fantastic. I'm very excited about it. So, yeah, thank you very much for the work. I'm excited this is starting. I know this was part of 2017, and it's, you know, we knew at that time when that failed that these things were going to take time to get to, and I'm really excited that we're able to get this on our docket and start looking at this because it's a really important piece to our school. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Paulson, you grabbed?
Just, this kit, it sounded like they're kind of modular.
They are.
So, in the walkthroughs, were those dispersed?
Yeah, they are.
And so, would there be like a standard configuration and then, kids are free to move it around, or does it get moved against the wall every day?
Oh, those are actually like built-in place cabinets. So, they're modular, so each piece is its own part. And based on the certain library's needs, we place different modules together to fit those needs.
Okay. So, the stuff that you were showing in the walkthrough is modular and can be moved around?
Yeah. Or modular, no. Well, the furniture can, but the casework on the side of the walls can't.
Okay. Yeah, I misinterpreted that, so thanks.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you.
Oh, one other question. This is part of what's in our capital for next year? I don't remember it.
Yeah. And again, yes. So, when the facilities committee looked at next summer's work, this was included in it. It is not part of your $7.2 million commitment to Sherman Durges, to your capital infrastructure. It is over and above that. But again, we have alternate funding sources that are coming in.
Okay, so it's not, okay. Yeah, that was really my question, so thank you.
I have one quick question.
On the community surveys, what were the higher priorities in those surveys that were needed in the space?
So, they varied between each school. So, we felt like the survey had a great feedback. We had over 160 responses, just community alone. And what was very interesting is that the children's surveys, the student surveys, almost perfectly aligned with the parents of what they wanted and what they felt they needed in those spaces. The big things that came out of them were a space that felt fun and inviting, a space that was collaborative, and then, also, lower on the list, because I would have thought it would have been higher, was technology of their top three, top five area. Thank you very much.
Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, I always get the tough last when we talk buildings. I want to kind of start with something that Susan alluded to. You know, we spent several years focusing on the capital infrastructure of our district as part of our master facility plan and huge investments in just kind of the buildings. And so, now, we're beginning to have conversations about the student impact, the places where kids learn, how they learn, how they work together. So, it's really exciting to see these two schools as a pilot. We're fortunate that we have these two funding sources. But I also want to make sure that the board understands and the community understands this is tied to our portrait of a graduate. Think about the skills that we try to incorporate into, that we have incorporated into the portrait of a graduate, you know? Communicator, working as a group to communicate, leveraging technology to communicate, collaborator, some of the spaces we see. This is where, I'll get a little architect here, this is where the architecture enables the learning experiences of students to touch on what we're trying to do within the portrait of a graduate. So, it's great to start at the elementary level, but if you think about our next agenda topic tonight, those kids are going to go off to the middle school. So, I would imagine that, you know, the kinds of plans we get incorporated into our middle school, long-range plans, will kind of follow through similar ideas when we talk about the elementary schools. So, we're beginning to kind of blend together our investment in both the buildings and the student learning experience. So, it's exciting to see.
Agreed.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming home.
Thank you, yeah.
Anybody else before I go?
So, I just have just a logistical question, and it's about the Whittier floor plan. And having been a classroom teacher that surrounded the library, and as I walked through it today, it was similar to how when I was there where there are, there's furniture that helps, you know what I'm talking, it helps define those walkways from those classrooms. I'm just thinking about how are we going to, as I'm looking at this and seeing it somewhat open, and thinking about lunch schedules that might vary, or times that kids are going to PE and that. We don't, if we don't have those kind of defined areas, are we disrupting some of the learning that's happening there? It's just those questions have been.
Wayfinding was a critical part. I mean, they showed a few different ways that we can even use. So, actually, a great example of this is Jefferson, the new early childhood center. Actually, the design in the floor helps with wayfinding, right? You build designs into the floor, so you see a two-tone tile, right, floor, and you can, you can really strategically, actually, even in a number of our elementary schools, Hawthorne got a new floor this summer, Washington, and they use some insets in the floor to actually help with wayfinding, to know when you're going into a classroom, kind of how you're navigating. So, I'm sure that, to say, I think, you know, Kelsey, Zach, and team have already started really kind of think about the layout of the furniture, understanding there still has to be a traffic flow through.
I was just curious about that today, having just literally walked that area. The lighting is the other thing that I'm probably the most excited about, especially for Whittier. If you walk through that, there is none, there is no natural light in that area right now. So, I couldn't believe how dark it was today as I was looking at it.
Yeah, the only natural light that comes in is from the classrooms on the outside, which is bare at a minimum. So, it will be a big change having those two windows in the hallway and then, also, the skylights above.
Yeah. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the middle school capital projects update.
Yep. So, this actually is a very quick update. It's not intended for substantial discussion today, but just to preview the two major discussion points, especially with the middle school plan. So, at our facilities committee meeting, I think it was last week, we reviewed this timeline, and I'm going to have Dr. O'Keefe just kind of help the board understand how we're approaching planning on the middle school projects. This is another connection point to 2017. So, another major part of the 2017 master facility plan involved middle school projects at Monroe, Franklin, and Edison, where we are. And we've spent a lot of time and energy, especially in the capital space, at our elementary schools and at our high schools. And it's time to turn our attention back to middle school. So, Dr. O'Keefe?
Thank you. No formal presentation tonight, just a few bits of information for you. You've got a document in your green folder that just talks about the guiding principles behind what we're looking at regarding the middle school capital projects. Really, two major areas, what are our educational needs, as we have been discussing in many different aspects tonight, and then, what are the facility needs, the infrastructure needs? So, on the educational side, we know that we're going to tie everything to the portrait of a graduate, make sure that it meets the needs and requirements from a learning acceleration and an SEL perspective, and in the big picture, ensure that whatever is decided with those middle school projects meets the overall goals of our Vision 2026. Then, when you just look at the facility, we certainly have to take into account any mechanical needs, any changes that are significant that might require updates from an ADA perspective. We may be looking at some configuration changes, especially over at Franklin. Certainly, we have to build into our discussions and potential plans that the team from Perkins and Will will bring back. Do we need to worry about major utilities? And a good example is on the back end of Monroe. Certainly, capital upgrades, so things that we need to do that become a code conversation, capital updates, things that we need to do or we should do that's from an aesthetic perspective. And then, obviously, both in the LLCs that we just heard about now, plus all the work that we'll plan for the middle schools, you know, what do we need to touch in terms of furniture fixtures and equipment overall to ensure that we're meeting guidelines for 21st century classroom or 21st century learning space? The other piece that we have for you is just the timeline. We've met a few times with the team from Perkins and Will. Again, that team has been, that team put together your 2016 facilities master plan. We've re-engaged them to do the work specifically on the middle schools. Our core group internally meets with that group again tomorrow morning to start looking at really ideas behind what they think can be done within the footprint of each of those schools. It's possible that for the board meeting in October, I'll have some more details to bring to you, that will become more clear tomorrow. But there is a plan for the Perkins and Will team to come and provide you with options and talk about those options at your December board meeting.
Any questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe? Thank you.
Thinking about Jefferson in the process, and that was obviously a bigger thing, but the facilities committee was involved in multiple steps. Is it possible to lay that out on the plan?
Where the facilities committee is coming?
Maybe, or we may not know yet, but just thinking about it a little bit, their involvement, the touch points.
Yeah, we certainly can. We showed on here, obviously, the two points where we anticipate coming to the full board. Obviously, on the October and December meeting, I think what we've talked with the facilities committee is where there are some points, I think, the facilities committee kind of asked to come together in front of each of those board presentations to see where we are, check up on where we are, and kind of, as needed. The other thing, I just want to be really clear that by the 23rd, just conceptually, I want you to think about two things, right, that we hope to have matched together by the 23rd. One, obviously, Dr. O'Keefe has laid out what are the issues and needs we're trying to solve at each of the buildings, right? That's the starting point. We anticipate having options for addressing that. So, not necessarily a plan, but options, right? Multiple ways that we could possibly address those needs at each of the schools. And so, when we get to January, right, there's a back half of this timeline that then really has to do with how we work with, engage with our community to look at the different options that are available, to understand some of the costs that are associated with those options, and to understand, obviously, the options on how we address the financing elements to it. So, the 23rd is not the end date. The 23rd is just the end date of this first phase of understanding what are the needs and what are some of the ways we can go about and the scope of that, which then launches kind of the second phase of it. I met this morning with our leadership team for Citizens Advisory Committee, and one of the things that we talked about with CAC is utilizing some version of CAC, possibly with a number of the applicants that may not have an opportunity to join CAC this year, but forming kind of an ad hoc facilities committee, a community-based committee to kind of pick us up from January, you know, moving forward. So...
I think it's fantastic.
And in the big picture, I think our goal would be to have a plan together. This is a multi-year plan. So, even once it comes together, unlike those LLC projects, this is not a one-summer project at either of those schools. This is a multi-year implementation to phase it in, but our hope would be to start summer of '24 with the first phase of whatever it is that we want to do. But there's a lot to flesh out.
When you keep saying the 23rd, you mean January 23rd.
January, I'm sorry. I'm here. I'm looking at Jan, January of 20, that's right, it's January of '23, not January 23rd, January of the year '23.
And then, one other thing, then, where it says BT on number three and six, what's BT stand for? This is on the...
Probably building team.
Yeah.
Building team.
Okay, thank you.
So, each of the three middle schools has a core building team that's giving us some...
You can make up a lot of things for that.
I have just a question. I don't know what our board schedule at the top of my head looks like, but if we have any opportunities to be in middle schools for our board meetings, maybe there are some things you can share with board members about what you're kind of thinking long-range with that, you know? I'm just thinking, to refresh our minds, we're not always in every single building, but you know, as we're, if we, I think we have a Monroe one, you know, what was it that you're looking at for Monroe? And just kind of give us, you know, while we're there, we can at least visually see it.
And actually, I think you're going to, one, that's a big part of the October discussion, is kind of understanding those needs specific to each building, which I think will then, whether it's board or when you're out at an adopted school, visiting, you'll have, I think, a pretty good understanding after October of the major buckets, at least, at each of the schools.
Anything else?
Yeah, just one comment, kind of thinking really big picture here. So, our middle schools haven't really been touched from an educational standpoint, from what I can tell ever, you know, with added spaces to them, but from kind of transforming, you know, how kids learn in the school, the way they use spaces, I don't think it's ever happened. So, this is really our first major that I can recall, you know, opportunity to put a big impact on students. Remember, every student in our district goes to our middle school. So, it's not like touching one LLC in an elementary school. This touches all the students for 30 to 40 years. So, this is really, I think, a strategic, thoughtful investment to have, you know, have an impact on how students learn for, you know, generations of students. So, let's take the time to do it right, engage the community in the process, have a good plan, and then, consider all the other factors that would have to go into that. So, again, I'll tie it back to our original vision back in 2017.
I just have one more question. And I love the idea of creating possibly that ad hoc. That would also not only maybe look at facilities, but how we would pay for that as well? Are we going to possibly run through that?
Multiple aspects.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. We have next our discussion item, the Vision 2026 work plan.
Yeah, so, at the last board meeting, if the board will remember, we introduced you to the new tool that hosts our dashboard, and there is a second element to that tool that allows us to track or identify our work plans. So, I think the board had an opportunity over the last month to look at some of the strategies that were in there. I don't think there should be anything in those annual plans. It was a major surprise that we haven't talked about. Our work really sits pretty centered in our strategic plan around learning acceleration... Our work really sits pretty centered in our strategic plan around learning acceleration, our intentional SEL focus, all of the things that surround learning acceleration in our assessment system and structures, the focus on Portrait of Graduate, and then on the operational side. Obviously, you heard tonight about a lot of the facilities work. You heard about finance work through the budget. I think we've talked to you about our strategic need to make sure we continue to be thoughtful in staffing and how we're addressing staffing needs across the district. So I guess floor is open if there are questions, comments, additional considerations. There's no formal action on the work plans. We just want to make sure that it captures the directive and needs of the board, right, as we look at the important work in front of us this year.
Are there any questions or comments? Anyone want to start?
The only comment I would have is some of the numbers were hard to understand without context. And so I know that we'll get more context to those numbers as we have historical data. But to the extent that there is any context we can provide, that was helpful for me as a user of understanding what those numbers meant and the significance of them. As if we don't have that data, of putting that in the information section, you click on that ISO, that parents understand.
Makes sense.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go. Because I was flipping through the work plans. Some of them are very, have multiple items, some have just one item. Will the ones that have one item be broken out a little bit more over time, or is that the one item?
Yeah, no, and again, this is just for this current school year that we're in. This is not intended to be a four-year plan. This was our area of focus for this upcoming, the year that we're in. So yes, I think, Rob, to answer your question, we recognize we could not attack everything on this strategic plan in the first year. So there are some of the strategy elements in the plan that we are just taking an initial step, right, in that area. I think you will see more detailed strategies to come likely in future years in the strategic plan.
So I was trying to log in so I could quote an example. I just can't find it right now. But one of them was, we're going to work on a plan to do dot-dot-dot.
Right, probably under the portrait of a graduate.
And the other one is, the next one below, the work, the actual item is work on the plan. So I'm just wondering if there was more meat to it than that. I mean, should we expect to see more in there? Or, I don't know how to react to that, right? It seems just kind of...
Yeah, yeah, and again, so throughout the year, at all of your, all the updates that come to the board, both at committee, the whole meetings, and at regular board meetings, those plans are going to be fleshed out, discussed, reported on. So yes is the answer to that. I believe the intent of the work plans is to capture the work and what's happening. You will monitor that work through the year as reports come to the board showing the progress of that work. But anywhere throughout, whether it be, you know, here at the starting point, or as we bring updates on some of the key items, if we are not providing the level of detail you need to fully understand either the work or the impact on students and learning...
Yeah, maybe it's just a side conversation to break it apart a little bit so I can understand it better, but I wouldn't, there's no action yet.
Happy to.
Thanks.
Susan, yeah, so kind of piggybacking on Rob, and that was helpful because it was kind of one of my, not kind of, it was one of my questions as far as some of these strategies, if it was for four years or one year. So it's for one year, okay. And I had, you know, the same question about some of the strategies that they didn't feel like as actionable, like something that could be measured, that would move that percentage along, that was difficult for me to understand, like how that particular item was going to move that indicator along. And just to give you context of how I looked at this, my professional experience was in project management. So I look at these as like, you know, these objectives are, there's like a little project plan underneath that that has your steps to your end goal, you know, for that objective, and that these strategies would be some of those pieces that get you to that end goal or whatever. And so, you know, I think too that maybe it's a separate conversation for me to understand how some of those are done. One...
So again, no, just come back to it, because I appreciate the question, right? This sets the context for your future agendas. So whatever you want to spend more time on from this strategic plan, you tell us as the governing board, and we'll bring back whatever level of detail you need to understand how we're approaching that work. And again, more importantly, how it connects back to the indicators. What I will tell you is, right, the work of learning is too complicated to say for every indicator, there's one straight-line strategy that's going to move that indicator, right? As Melissa talked tonight about adopting a set of core materials, right? Let's take the math adoption. Think of all of the aspects of learning, right, that are tied into that math adoption from the quality of the material, the instructional experience itself, how we scaffold it for students, how we monitor learning and slide kids in and out of intervention and opportunity, right? There's multi-dimensions that ultimately are going to impact what percentage of students are performing at grade level and what percentage of students are growing in the way they should, right, over the years. So I don't want to ever try to suggest or simplify the work to say for every indicator, there's one straight-line measure that's going to get us there. It's a compilation of all of the work pieces. But again, with that said, right, the intent is to set the table through the plan, and then you tell us throughout the year where you need a greater understanding of what's going into the recipe or how it's impacting the outcome. And, you know, that, I think, is what we should be spending time at this table focused on, right? Like, it's the outcome, right, of what we're doing.
Susan, did you get everything?
Yeah, I think, like I said, I think it, I think it's just me, I think it would be better to have a one-to-one.
But again, what you want us to spend more time on, right, at every board meeting, you have that topics for future agenda, right, that is the ideal time to say, I would really like to spend more time understanding the strategy around, you know, developing indicators in the portrait of a graduate, right? If that's an example, and you will then help us to obviously craft the future agenda and where we're going to spend time.
So just a contextual follow-up, right? So when I see a item with three, two or three strategies, that's very clear, but when I see an item with one or no strategies, how should I, how should I react, how should I think about that?
Yeah, so if it has none, it means it was a broad strategy identified in the strategic plan. We have a prioritized focus for this year, right? So we had to prioritize, right? I think Brad asked a question at one point to say, if you count up all the strategies, right, there are like 33 strategies, work strategies in here, and recognize it's a lot, right?
Academic excellence.
On the academic side. So, I mean, we have layers of support within the district that are focusing on different elements, so we can do that. But like, we cannot take all of this work on in one year, so all it means is we've prioritized some areas. This year, major focus has been on learning acceleration and those strategies, the college career readiness pathways work, and some of the elements within our SEL work. As a leadership team, as we kind of crafted our playbook for this year and the major, that's where the attention went first, is learning acceleration, college career readiness through the pathways work, and our SEL work.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Anything else before I go? Go ahead.
Well, some of my comments have already been shared. First off, I love the tool. It's clear, it's measured, I like the way it's set up, I like the way it's accessible, much more digestible than some of the graphics we've used in the past. I guess two quick comments, and some of them, other ones have been addressed. So when I read the academic excellence side, the one thing that really stood out to me, and I wasn't prepared to talk about this, but based on your comment, I really think, you know, development, development implementation resources aligned with our Portrait of Graduate is probably one of the most important things, you know, I can't remember where I wrote it, but engage in collaborative research to begin the work of development of competencies and benchmarks. I believe, you know, that's going to, that work is going to then be the first step in a lot of different activities that we do, curriculum, career pathways. I really think that feels to me like the most important, one of the most important priorities for future discussions, at least on the academic excellence side of this. And then the other, so that's really my comment on priorities. Maybe in a future discussion, more on the dashboard side, I'd like to get some clarity around kind of the fast bridge percentages versus the IAR percentages. I think that's a little bit confusing for people who don't understand. So we've got academic math 6.8 and reading ELA 6.8. When you look at the percentages, it seems like it's the same measure, but they're very different achievement levels. So that, I think that would be something that's important to share with the board and share with the community. You know, how do we use those two things? Which one's more, maybe more relevant to what we do on a daily basis? I think I know the answers to that, but...
Yeah, happy to.
I just had a, just a feedback on it, it was more on using the dashboard, because as I sat and looked at that this week, I struggled with, and I can't, I can't pull it up right now, but can I use yours for a second? Thank you. Thanks. I struggled, when I clicked on the strategy, and the strategy has a percentage, I didn't understand in some cases what that meant, and I thought if I'm not understanding, like 10%.
Yeah, that is, so that indicator is only an internal indicator of the progress we believe we're making on that strategy. So it's not a, that's not a numeric, that is simply a workflow. It's a tool to help us monitor our workflow on those strategies.
So that's internal?
That's internal.
Okay, because I was...
Internal meaning our management of that strategy. So I wouldn't spend too much time focused on that.
Okay, that's all. That was the only one that, I was confused by what that meant, so...
So just to clarify, the entire strategy section is internal? It's not going to be public facing?
It will, you know, we can, we can. I wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to kind of respond, ask questions, and we will make those strategies, we can make the strategies public. But again, the, kind of the monitoring and percentage, that's intended to really be an administrative workflow to just help us keep track of where we are.
Anything else? Okay, the written, going on, written reports attached to the agenda were the monthly financial reports, board communication log, teacher administration and IMRF compensation reports, FOIA report, reports from other board members, board committee reports will be on, the facilities and finance will be on next month, other reports from board members. Anybody?
I'm going to Pleasant Hill Friday.
Nice.
First adopted school visit of the year.
You can dance with her, and she plays her ukulele.
I will not be dancing.
It's just fun to do. Anybody else?
There was no dancing, but I did get to go to Lowell and Madison for my school visits. I had a really great visit at both schools. It was good to see some of the decisions that we make here, how they're implemented at the school, some of the feedback from some of our recent decisions was on substitute teachers and how those have been helpful to free up some of the teachers' time to prepare for the math lessons, and to make sure that teachers were, substitute teachers were available so that reading specialists weren't pulled, you know, for children that, you know, had those appointments. So just from both schools, the professionalism and the enthusiasm of the teachers was really very apparent, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
I walked through Weasbuck today and spent time in the Learning Center. Just wanted to see what that was like, and so it was very interesting to see today's presentation. And I'll be honest, I thought the Learning Center was laid out really well. It's modular, there's different kinds of spaces to work in. And so when we think about our dated LLCs, I think our professionals are doing an outstanding job configuring the existing space with the existing materials. And it was just, it was very impressive, to me, very impressive. It was laid out very well. And the, look at the different books and how they were laid out, how they were displayed, how they engage kids visually on what's available in this area and in other areas. Also, several times, was pointed out that the PTA is contributing to help with this, the PTA is contributing to help with that. So clearly, our PTAs are, and we've known this from our, you know, when we do consent agendas, but they just continue to contribute and raise funds and things to impact learning on a regular basis, so it's really exciting to see. One of them was they're buying sleeves for the grown books for the kids, which is great. So just good stuff, real good stuff. Nice to be in the school.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
I was, I went to Bauer, I actually, I actually went there as a volunteer. I know they were having staff shortages there with their teaching assistants, so I offered to volunteer in classroom for an afternoon, and that was just, again, just a really great experience to be in the classroom with kids and reading books and doing art class and, you know, and helping the kids. I was actually at recess pushing swings and, you know, it just really helped to ground me, you know, a little bit in what we're doing here. And then I am planning to go to Hawthorne and actually help cut out math manipulatives. And I did not know that was going to be a thing. And again, I think I am just sort of looking at some of those volunteer opportunities, having high school kids now. Like, I did that a lot when my kids were in elementary, and I liked that part of it, and I think it's a different way to experience the school. And, you know, and I know when I was on the playground pushing swings, you know, one of the aides came up to me, and she's like, "So you're a board member?" And I'm like, "Huh?", you know, and she's like, "This is new", you know? And I'm like, "I'm good, I'm, you know, pushing the kids", and it was really fun. So just, I'm just offering out there, that's another way to go into your schools, is that, you know, sometimes, you know, I'm on the newsletters for the schools, and they are looking for parent volunteers, and I certainly don't sign up right away, because I want the parents of the school, obviously, to volunteer if they are able to. But I kind of keep an eye on some things to see if they, if they're not having a lot of volunteers for whatever reason, and I'm available, I can go. So, and one thing I forgot to mention last month was, I just wanted to mention, just to sort of wear both my board hat and parent hat at the same time here, is my older son actually participated in the manufacturing internship that the school district did over the summer. And so I just wanted to say, it was fantastic for my son. He really, really enjoyed it and really enjoyed the employer, and I just thought it was a really great experience, and I just wanted to say thank you to Ian Smith, who, you know, coordinated that program. And I think it, you know, I don't know what the other participants' experiences were, but I can say it was very positive for my son, who right now wants to study mechanical engineering, and it was just a great experience for him to work on the machines. And, you know, he, it's just a great experience. He came home one day with this huge smile on his face, he's like, "I got to run a machine by myself today", and he was so excited. And then when he came home the next day, 60% of his parts that he ran were not in spec, you know, because he was using the measurement tool wrong. But, you know, they were cool about it, and I mean, that's learning, and he, you know, he was not upset about it, and, you know, saw it as a learning experience. So it was just a great opportunity, and I just wanted to mention that, that, you know, I hope that's something that we can continue.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one more thing I forgot to mention. At the very beginning of this meeting, we talked about the board governance recognition that we received, so I want to thank Chris and Rob for leading that effort. You know, that's an every-two-year award, so reflects kind of the work we've done the past two years. I always wonder the measure, but I think we're one of the, one of only a few school districts that have won that six times, so really reflects that 11- or 12-year span of really kind of continuous learning and accomplishments of many boards over time. So I think it's something we should be very proud of, and I'm sure Eric already has a social media post almost ready to go. So thanks for, two of you for leading that effort and for all the work that the board and the other boards have done over the years for our, excuse me, for our students and community.
Diana needs a shout-out as well. She was very, a big part of helping us gather the materials and the support documents that needed to happen to go with that. So just want to make sure we acknowledge her as well. Anybody else? Anything? Okay, topics for future discussion, does anybody have anything?
I do. If we could get an update or some clarification on the new grading system or scales or process at middle school and high school.
Grading scales?
Grading, I have the word. Or grading, I have the word wrong. Grading system, I guess.
High school.
High school.
And middle school, yeah.
Did middle school change?
I don't think middle schools had a substantial change, but.
I just feel, so after having, as a parent, gone to curriculum nights, I felt I was confused, so if, maybe we could have some clarification on that.
Anybody else?
Future discussion, we have resolutions coming in front of us fairly soon, this time of the year.
I haven't seen anything yet.
Haven't seen it yet, but yeah.
But I'll look, you know, they were changing.
Susan's favorite part of the year.
They were changing.
I'm looking for it, I'll tell you no.
Yeah, they're changing it, so there's limits in how many a school district can go out with, there's limits in if you've gone out with something before and it has failed, trying to bring it back again and not making changes. So they were doing some things internally, so maybe that might be why, I would think we normally do it, I'm pretty sure, we have the conversation in October, but they may have already been, Brad, I'm thinking about it, we typically.
I haven't seen them yet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's coming.
Yeah, so, I think it's October, so.
Chris, the word was policy, grading policy, at the schools.
Yeah.
System.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, next regular meeting is October 12th at Jefferson. Great to see kids again. September 28th Committee of the Whole is back at School Service Center. There being no further action to come before the board and open session, I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Booton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned, everybody needs to sign the budget.